September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Oh.
Trustee Abbott.
Roll call.
Here.
Yeah.
Trustee Frost.
President.
Trustee Garcia.
Here.
Trustee Gupta.
Yep.
Trustee Malone.
Here.
Trustee Maniscalco.
Here.
President Skilman.
Here, thank you. I need a motion also to appoint Carrie as our recording secretary tonight.
I'll make that motion to appoint Carrie as our temporary clerk.
I'll second. Thank you. We're motion by trustee Frost, second by trustee. Who?
Maniscalco.
Maniscalco, was it? I'm sorry. A roll call, please.
Trustee Frost.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Trustee Gupta.
Yep.
Trustee Malone.
Yes.
Trustee Maniscalco.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
President Skilman.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Carrie Shahan. Um, please stand for pledge allegiance. We do have, um, some visitors tonight. Distinguished guests from Sleepy Hollow. If you guys want to start yourself and lead us in the pledge allegiance, or if you want to sing the national anthem, that's fine.
Pledge allegiance, salute to the flag, from the United States of America. The nation of the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call, but no. Yeah, uh, village president, mayor Courtney Bowe, if you'd like to come up, please. Thank you.
Well, trustee Canelli and I back there, we're having boardroom envy, and we really want microphones now, so this is a treat.
Yes. Well, if you could get mics up here, make sure you get pushed to talk, because we like to talk a lot, and then people hear us out there.
Do you have a mute button, like where you can stop people?
We don't have any buttons, yeah.
Uh, well, folks, for those of you who I haven't met yet, I'm the new village president of Sleepy Hollow. My name's Courtney Bowe. And I'm just really excited to be here tonight, and I wanted to thank all of you for considering this intergovernmental agreement between our two villages. Um, as many of you know, President Pickett had been on the board for twenty-four years as our valiant leader. And we've had quite a bit of a learning curve these past few months, as well as some personnel, personal issues. So about a month into office, when we were going through an issue, I wanted to call somebody who wasn't Sleepy Hollow to get some in, some input. And I called John, President Skilman, sorry.
No.
And it was just, it was wonderful to speak to somebody who's been there, kind of ask about the other companies around here and towards the tail end. But he said, you know, if you need some assistance in the interim, let us know, maybe we can do a shared services, something. And it all just kind of grew from there, and Brad met with myself and our administrator Eugene Van, and we met with Jorge and Tim, I believe it was. And had a wonderful just dialogue back and forth, and it, it didn't feel like we were coming hat in hand. You saw our value, and we really wanted to work with you guys. So again, I just want to say thank you very much. I hope this starts, leads to more endeavors between us, and then I can get my village, my village people. But I can get my residents to come out and participate in your festivals and fests and get more open doors between our communities.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Actually, I've already received, um, I've already received a text from somebody from West Dundee, um, stating, are, are you doing inspections or permits for Sleepy Hollow? I said, no comment. Thank you, guys. Seriously, thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, we're moving on. The proclamation tonight, we're proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, October fifth through October eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Village of Carpenter'sville proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, October fifth through eleven to twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Fire Prevention Week established in nineteen twenty-five, the longest running public health obs- observance in the United States. Complaining the Chicago fire in eighteen seventy-one, raising public awareness about fire safety. And whereas the Carpenter's Fire Department is committed to providing essential fire prevention, education, and protecting the public from devastating fires. And whereas the National Fire Protection Agency has designated charge into fire safety lithium batteries in your homes. Um, as the theme for Fire Prevention Week in twenty twenty-five. Lithium ion batteries, uh, power countless household electronics, including phones, laptops, cordless power tools. But can be, can pose a fire hazard if not used, charged, and stored properly. Whereas it is critical for all residents to understand the risk of fire safety precautions associated with lithium ion batteries, including purchasing only devices and batteries with recognized safety certification mark. I should have you read this, huh? Using the whole, only the charger that came with the device or the manufacturer approved a replacement. Charging devices on a hard, stable surface, not under a pillow or a blanket or on furniture. Unplug a device when it's fully charged and never charging, never charge batteries overnight. Recycling damaged or used batteries responsibilities, never in the trash and regular recycling bins. Or in regular recycling bins. And whereas the, we encourage all residents to take an active role in fire prevention by learning about addressing these new risks along with foundational safety practices. Like having a home fire escape plan and working smoke alarms. That's important. Whereas we acknowledge and honor the unwavering commitment and bravery of our firefighters and first responders who work tirelessly to protect our community, protect our community. And now therefore, I, John Skilman, president of the Village of Carpenter'sville, do hereby proclaim October fifth through eleventh, twenty twenty-five, Fire Prevention Week. So thank you, guys. We do have our open house on October fourth at Station ninety-three. So we're gonna have like so much stuff. It's gonna be fun. We're gonna have like the Chicago Bears there, a mini camp. They're gonna do a little mini camp for the kids. And what else we got? From ten A M. to one P M. We have food, because I would get hungry. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So everybody, please stop by and, um, yeah, and check it out. So, um, we'll even invite people from Sleepy Hollow, so if they, if they're available. Are they there the same day? Oh, you have the same day. Sorry, you're not invited. So. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Um, we have no appointments tonight. Uh, no, any public comment? No public comment. Consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on the item unless the trustee so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So.
To make a motion to accept the consent agenda, items A through M.
I'll second.
We have a, a motion on the table, trustee Maniscalco. Thank you. And we have a second by trustee Garcia. Roll call, please.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Trustee Gupta.
Yes.
Trustee Malone.
Yes.
Trustee Maniscalco.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Trustee Frost.
President.
President Skilman.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Any old business tonight? No? New business approval, approval of a resolution accepting a professional service agreement for phase two. Design engineering for the wastewater treatment facility standalone generator with Engineering Enterprises of Sugar Grove, Illinois, in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand three ten. Mr. Gray.
So this one's pretty straightforward, right, from the title? Um, so the village, uh, completed, um, major improvements to the wastewater, uh, treatment facility in two thousand and three. That design actually did include a generator, but due to budget constraints, it was pulled from the project. So we do not have an emergency generator to run the treatment operations of the facility. We do have one generator, but that's actually just for the inflight pumps. So it, though that generator, when we lose power, it just pumps up the wastewater and allows everything to flow by gravity. But at, at that point, when we lose power, um, we, we're not treating anything, basically. So this is just basically for the design of a, one standalone generator to allow the treatment, um, process to continue when we lose power. We did lose power in, uh, twenty twenty-three twice, one for five hours and one for eight hours. And we almost lost, the one for eight hours, we almost lost our bugs. And when you lose your bugs, um, it's really difficult to get that treatment process going again. And you can also get, uh, I E P A fines, um, if you.
Director Gray, could you explain bugs?
It's, I, okay, so I'm not a wastewater operator, but basically it's little microorganisms that, that eat things. I'll leave it at that.
Got to see him.
Anybody have any questions for Director Gray?
No.
No, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Manager Stewart?
Uh, we would ask for a motion on the new business item that Director Gray had just presented.
Oh, yeah, thank you for that.
I'll motion to approve item A on their new business.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by trustee Garcia, second by trustee Abbott. Item A and new business. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gupta.
Yes.
Trustee Malone.
Yes.
Trustee Maniscalco.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Trustee Frost.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
President Skilman.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Oh, manager Stewart?
Well, thank you, President Skilman, Board of Trustees. A couple of updates. Uh, first of all, I, I do want to lead off just really sincerely thanking everyone who participated in, volunteered, uh, and otherwise attended the El Grito Parade and Festival last weekend. Uh, the village board, uh, thank you for, for being there and your support of that. Uh, some of you helped as, uh, a more volunteer capacity as well. Thank you. Uh, thank you to the El Grito Committee, the Special Events Advisory Committee, uh, that provided volunteers, public works, police, fire. And, uh, I don't think, uh, we can overstate our thanks to Greta and Jen, uh, for really, really, uh, just leading the charge with that entire event. So, uh, thanks to everyone in the community for making that, uh, I, I think that was the best El Grito event we've, we've ever had. Um, Public Works is initiating the traffic calming study for Gulfview Lane. Uh, speed capturing signs will be placed by next week, uh, along Gulfview, both the north and the south legs. Uh, we have received multiple resident complaints in the area in recent months. So we're following a similar path that we did with, uh, more recently, both, both Wakefield and Tulsa, where the traffic calming studies did indicate that there were measures that should be implemented. Uh, so we'll, we'll follow, uh, that same course for the time being and, and see what we come up with. Um, the financial side, Assistant Manager Mason did distribute along the dais at everyone's station. Uh, what would be the revenues and expense year to date through August? Uh, on a high level, the numbers are favorable to budget, revenues coming in at almost sixty-five percent of our annual budget through two thirds of the year. Uh, noting that the August numbers do not reflect the second installment of property tax revenue for the year. Um, on the expense side, overall, we are at sixty percent of our budget expenses year to date in the general category. Uh, but only forty-four, uh, point four percent of our total budgeted expenditures year to date across all categories. Noting that our capital projects and enterprise fund expenditures are substantially lower than budgeted for the year. We do expect there to be some increase in those funds in particular, uh, but we're still anticipating that, uh, the year-end expenditures are going to be significantly lower than what was budgeted for the year. Um, speaking of budget, staff is continuing to, uh, make the first round of preliminary budget entries, uh, by each department for twenty twenty-six. Uh, the combined village board meeting and Audit and Finance Committee meeting is going to be Monday, August twenty-ninth at six P M. Uh, also at the Public Works Training Room, as, as it was last time we did this.
It was September, you said August.
Yes, it is.
Oh, I said August. Thank you. Thank you for the correction. It is September for sure. Otherwise, we're very late. Um, the, um, the Coles Building is, uh, starting to come down if anybody, uh, has driven past it. Uh, so, uh, we're hoping that most of the vertical construction, we'll see the demolition of that in the next, uh, week or two. Um, and then it'll just be kind of clearing and crushing, uh, some of the concrete, uh, that, that will remain there, as you see with the rest of the mall area. We are continuing discussions with the Horizon Development Group for the re-initiation of the Iron Flats Project, uh, ultimately subject to village board approval. Uh, would invite any board members with any questions about, um, where Horizon's at, what's being discussed. Uh, happy to discuss that with you, uh, individually, if anyone would like to have that, uh, just kind of a deeper level of, of knowledge as to what we're exchanging in terms of, uh, concepts with the terms. Uh, in light of the board's approval of the new Tiff District, congratulations, we just approved a new Tiff District. Uh, Community Development Director Dubrowski, uh, and I will be meeting with the developer of the seven to eight, um, multi-residential units. Uh, in the next week or so, uh, we're just trying to pin down a, a date to meet with them, but that, that should be happening soon. Riverfront, uh, Park, just, uh, bids are going out in the next week for the Western, uh, actual improvement, uh, bid package. So the bid opening will be October seventh, or, oh, my gosh, yeah, October seventh, I said the right month this time. Um, so anybody looking for that, that will be the date, uh, October seventh. Uh, I'm sure everyone's aware, Fall Fest the Saturday, uh, ten to, uh, ten A M. to eleven P M. at Carpenter Park. Uh, appreciate everyone who's volunteering in advance. Um, and please review our online calendar of events. It has the schedule of bands, it has, uh, all the activity, uh, times as well. But we got lumberjacks, we got all sorts of things going on, so it should be a great time. Saturday morning also happens to be the Friends of the Fox River, uh, Rotary and Carpenter'sville Joint Initiative for the Fox River Cleanup, uh, which will be from eight to ten A M. Uh, if anyone is attending, it's at the Otto North Parking Lot, meaning on the east side of the river, the north parking lot. Uh, as opposed to the west side of the river, north parking lot. Um, so we already talked about the one hundred and tenth anniversary for the Fire Department. Uh, October fourth is also from five to eleven P M., the Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner. Um, we do have some openings at our table. If any trustees or other village officials have an interest, uh, please, uh, just reach out. Okay, uh, I'm making notes, uh, and we will get you, uh, reserved for, for that evening. Um, also, uh, we did confirm since last Friday, when, uh, my last, I guess, communication with the board on this, that Saturday, October eighteenth, uh, a time to be determined in the morning, will be the dedication of the memorial trees and plaques for the three children who, uh, had perished earlier this year. So, uh, there'll be more to come with the exact time, uh, just so everyone's aware, the family is not necessarily looking to make it a major event, but certainly our village board, um, uh, you know, would be more than welcome, and I, I think that would mean a lot to the, uh, the surviving family. Uh, finally, Saturday, October twenty-fifth is the inaugural Spooky Sprint and Haunted Happenings Event from nine to noon at and around Carpenter Park. Uh, so five K costume themed race with prizes begins the day, and there's a slower paced mini monster dash for children and or pets. If you don't want to do the five K and want to do the mini monster dash and want either children or pets, please see me. Um, that was a joke. Um, there will be a trunk or treat event in the parking lot as well. Um, and that's gonna be hopefully a really good event, um, and the first time we're doing it, so that's all I have.
Great, and then you guys heard him talk about Tulsa and Wakefield, so those are the speed bumps?
Correct.
Speed bumps, right, Kevin? I always, I like to say speed bumps. Speed bumps we're putting in, and then the calming study is like, you know, pulling people down on Gulfview, because Gulfview's having lots of problems. Gulfview, Gulfview's a tough street, though, because it's long and it curves and it's, yeah, goes all over. So, um, and Wakefield's a wide street, and Tulsa's in between, right? I mean, it's just, or is it about as wide as Wakefield?
Pretty wide.
Parking, yeah. Okay. So some challenges there, but, um, people are gonna be very, very, very happy that live down there. Because we've been having so many problems and accidents, severe, I mean, seriously, serious accidents, so thank you guys for handling that staff. Um, and with that being said, uh, where are we at? We are at trustee committee reports, trustee Maniscalco.
Well, I was going to cover all the special events, but, um, Brad stole my thunder on that. But we do have Fall Fest coming out. If you know people with kids, this is the thing to bring it to, bring them to, because everything's free for them. There's face painting, there's a magician, there's a hayride, pumpkin decorating. I mean, it's great for kids. I mean, and it goes, the kids' activities go from eleven to four. Um, so we have that, and then the entertainment's really great this year. We have lumberjacks. I hear there's a, going to be a special appearance by one of our trustees, Dickie Abbott. Um, and then our headliner is Radio Gaga, which is a really great band at nine thirty, so, um, try and come out to that. And then, um, the spooky haunt is coming up, as, um, Brad shared. I do also want to congratulate Chief Anisavitz for, um, the beautiful nine eleven ceremony. Um, what a great rendition by that little young lady of the, the Star Spangled Banner. It was amazing. Um, and it was a great tribute, so that's all I got.
Oh, thank you. Trustee Frost?
Uh, great job for everybody that was involved with the El Grito. It was good crowd. When I left, it was just getting dark. I don't know, it looked like, I saw some pictures, it was pretty packed. Yeah, that was, that was good to, good to see, and the nine eleven was fantastic. The crowds getting bigger every year, and it's really, I mean, it's just been a, it's been a real.
It's nice when the kids come from school.
Yes, yeah.
It helps the crowd bigger.
Yeah. Abigail was her name, it's saying, oh.
Firefighter, firefighter Corillo's niece.
Oh, is that, okay.
She's already been singing like professionally, you guys.
She's so good.
Yeah, she did a great job.
Nico, she sang in Woodstock, I guess, on the stage a couple of times, and she's, plays guitar and.
Excellent. Um, Sleepy Hollow, looking forward to working with you, face. Bill, thanks for the work on Monday at Fish Food Pantry. If anybody wants, if anybody would like to volunteer at the Fish Food Pantry, there's the man to talk to right there.
You didn't see the Texas bill, I seen it.
The full, yeah, the full van. Mondays are not for me, not for me.
Those are busy days.
But, no, it was, uh, it was fun, and they're always looking for volunteers, so that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Gupta.
Yeah. I second everybody on the El Grito. Amazing job done, amazing crowd, amazing job. Nine eleven, memories was amazing, as always, and looking forward to our next year, twenty-fifth anniversary for that. But thank you to everybody. Did a wonderful job.
And we had a celebration at I Love Psy Temple, and, um.
Thank you, John, for coming. That was, uh, there was another celebration at I Love Psy where John was honored for his, uh, undying support for the organization. It's a charity organization, volunteer based, it's a hundred percent volunteer based, there's. They do a lot of charity and give back to community, like they do a lot of means on the wheels and means to the needy, and, uh, they contribute a lot to D three hundred and Fish Food Pa- Pantry. Within Carpenter'sville and across Illinois. So that was, again, a very great event. Thank you.
Yeah, I know, it was, it was fun. I mean, there was a photographer there and, uh, you know, like a news guy, and he's from India, and he said, your, your picture's gonna be on, in forty-seven newspapers across India. I'm like, Ajay's gonna see me and stand next to me. Said our engineer's over there now for a month, Ajay, so. But no, seriously, it was very nice. It was awesome, um, you know, and they're just, they're so, you know, happy to be here in Carpenter'sville. They have people moving from like Buffalo Grove area out here to, to be close to their temple. So we did talk about, um, in March, uh, which we will talk to our Parks Special Events Committee soon. But, um, in March, we're gonna start, we're starting to plan it now. In March, we're gonna work with, um, the Trinity Yoga Temple and I Love Psy Temple on, um, I, I keep wanting to say Holly.
Festival of Lights.
Plus, the Festival of Lights, but holy.
Festival of Colors, holy.
Festival of Colors, holy, and we're gonna do that in Carpenter Park. It's gonna be.
That'd be amazing.
It's gonna be fun. We're gonna get the kids involved in town, you know, they, we can throw chalk or paint at each other, or, you know, whatever they do for the colors, right?
Water and colors.
Yeah, so it'll be a lot of fun, so we're gonna, we're, we're gonna start a committee for that soon and start working on that. So we have representations from both temples, so, but thank you. Sorry. Trustee Garcia.
Yes, I received a letter from the A C A, the Antique Automobile Club of America, thanking everybody for their support on their second annual car show. Next year, it's a f- fiftieth, fiftieth or seventy-fifth anniversary of that car show. They want to do something bigger, and I will forward a letter they sent me. Uh, it's got a lot of names and thanks a lot of people. Um, I want to thank everybody. Uh, as a Latino born in Mexico, it was quite an honor that you guys allowed me to do the El Grito celebration. Um, it's a long story, but I was able to do it. It remind me of why I am where I am. Thank you, guys, and thank America. That's it for me, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Malone?
I have no report.
Trustee Abbott?
Uh, besides echoing all the, uh, success and everything over our festivals, it was really great. I just want to add, I was, uh, very happy to see the dedication of the, uh, street sign for Mark Betker. He's a lifelong resident, former village president, and, uh, he's done a lot of things for our village. And I think that's the greatest thing that, uh, you know, that could happen to him, and I want to thank everybody for that, and it was fantastic.
Yeah, definitely, everybody for showing up, you guys, thank you. Um, we did that prior to our meeting tonight, um, out there in Providence Point. And, um, he's very sick right now, so, um, put him in your prayers, please. But he was, been a lifelong resident trustee, you know, he was on every committee that the village has, had, had, had ever had, and he was the village president for a term. So, um, yeah, so keep him in your prayers, please. Um, happy to work with Sleepy Hollow. That's great. I'm excited about that. Um, Dundee Crown Homecomings this weekend, just in case you see any crazy stuff going on, the kids are all gonna be out. Football game against Hampshire on Friday night, so, uh, we might be betting the Hampshire Village Board. Um, so if you hear it on the radio or something, or, uh, last year, we, we bet the, the mayor of Hampshire, Mr. Reed and myself, and we won, because I yelled at the kids at halftime, because we were losing. And I said, I'm, if I lose, you guys are paying for this food, so, but, um, we won, and they came out and, uh, they brought us some great sub sandwiches from downtown Hampshire, some, some restaurant there, and it was wonderful, actually. Right, Carrie? We got to eat well that day, and, um, sorry, you weren't here, but, um, but yeah, not you either. So anyways, it was good, um. It was great, and then, uh, so we'll see, we'll see, we might be doing it on the radio, uh, this Thursday, W R M N, little talk, because he's on, he talks on the radio every, every couple of weeks, and then I call in and give, give him a hard time and stuff, so. Um, but it's good, good relationship we have. Um, I M L this weekend, so a couple of us are going, right? Brad and Jim, okay?
Jim's going.
Are you going?
I'm not, but my colleagues are going, so, um, if you guys are going, we're gonna be looking for you, and we might put something together, um, too, to just hang out.
Awesome, yeah. So, Sam?
Sam, look for you.
So that's great. That'll be fun. Um, okay, so I just had a phone call my way here. So Mr. Gorman from the Bricks, so they actually met with, you're gonna find this interesting, Fox River lady. Um, friends of the Fox, that's what I meant. So Mr. Gorman called, he is, he met with the Forest Preserve yesterday about the river. So in front of, if you, if you've been by there lately, there's hardly any water in the Fox River in front of the Bricks. So Bricks on the Fox is like Bricks, right now it's an island, in front of his building. So they actually talked about, they're, they're gonna dredge the river, they're talking about. Because they've, supposedly they spent only a million three on removing the dam instead of doing it a different way, like three million, I believe they said. Uh, what was the original, what they were gonna do and clean it and whatever they were gonna do. So, um, with the complaints I've been getting, it sounded pretty favorable, he said, that they're gonna get something done and, uh, make it look a little more like a river, so, um, we're hoping, see what happens. I don't think any of us are involved in it. I'm not, were, were we aware of this? I wasn't aware of it.
Dredging, no.
About a meeting with them at all, and I wasn't aware, and, you know, but, um, I, I'm told that we can get involved if he needs any help, because we totally agree, and we can, you know, whatever. You know, be involved, so, uh, what else? Um. What else do I have? El Grito, of course, that was great. The parade was fun. We ran out of candy. Joe threw too much candy to the kids, and.
I kept yelling.
So we, uh, we ran out, so next year we have to buy more candy. And Fall Fest, yeah, please come out. Um, we need to advertise a little more. Let's share it, please, get it out there, because it's, I've had a couple of people saying, is it Fall Fest this week? And Fall Fest, yeah, please come out. Um, we need to advertise a little more. Let's share it, please get it out there because it's, I've had a couple of people saying, is it Fall Fest this week? So we're kind of lost in the, everything else going on. So. Are the signs up by? The big ones are up though by, the big ones. Oh, yeah. West. Yeah. And the big one out by Miller and yeah, Woodman's out there. Okay. Okay. So dredging the river is the big news of the day. So, um, we'll see what happens with that conversation. And, and I think, I think that's anybody else, everything else. No, we have no closed session tonight. And no committee reports. We already talked about audit and finance, right? Ben, we know when that next meeting is. Yeah. That's the joint meeting. That's an important meeting for all of us. So we need to be there if possible. Okay. Okay. Thank you. And with that being said, and looking for an adjournment.
A motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Motion is second on favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting adjourned.